Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call this meeting to order. It's Tuesday, September 8th, 2020 at 7:00 PM. I'd like to invite Reverend Pam McCurdy from Bethany United Methodist Church at 760 Hurt Road up to give our invocation and Pledge of Allegiance, please. Is the Reverend here with us? All right, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Corky Welch for the invocation and Pledge of Allegiance. Everybody, please rise.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for this evening, Lord. We thank you for these together today. We just ask your blessing upon this council and ask that the business that we take care for the city tonight, that it'll be for the benefit of everybody in the city and to further your name. In your name we pray. Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag.
Agenda changes. We have none. Item three is the mayoral report. We have three items here. Number, letter A, 2020-343, approval of the appointment of Police Chief Joseph Bennett as the interim city administrator for the city of Smyrna. And I'll give a little background. Tammy Sadler Jones' last day with the city was Friday, and we wish her the best in everything that she does going forward. I'll say that we're very lucky that we have talented staff here in the city, and I have full confidence that Joe Bennett will be a fantastic addition as interim city administrator. He's been meeting with staff all day today. Had a very, very exciting and productive first day, I'd say. So I'm gonna turn it over to our mayor pro temp, Tim Gould, to handle this agenda item, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As the mayor said, we're fortunate to have a deep, talented staff, and with Joe Bennett moving to temporary position of assistant, of city administrator, we're fortunate to have an equally talented person to fill his shoes at the police department, and that is, would that be Chief Robert Harvey. But in the meantime, do I have to make a motion for this? Okay. And so, in the meantime, I'd like to make a motion for item 3A, 2020-343, approval of Police Chief Joe Bennett as interim city administrator for the city of Smyrna.
Have a motion. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Lindley. All those in favor, please vote. Approved seven-zero. Congratulations, Joe, I think. Item B, 2020-344, as Mr. Gould stated, this is approval to authorize Deputy Police Chief Robert Harvey to serve as Acting Police Chief for the city of Smyrna for a term to be determined by interim city administrator slash Police Chief Joe Bennett. Mr. Gould.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, we're fortunate to have talented staff across the, across the, across the city, and particularly with Deputy Chief Robert Harvey. So with that, Mr. Mayor, I move to approve item 3B, 2020-344, approval of Deputy Chief Robert Harvey to serve as Acting Police Chief of the city of Smyrna.
Second.
Have a motion and a second by Mr. Welsh. Do I, all those in favor, please vote. Approved seven-zero. Is Robert here? Congratulations, Robert. He's in the audience tonight. 3C, 2020-330, this is a proclamation and recognition of Suicide Prevention and Awareness Month, and I'm pleased that tonight we have with us Irene Barton and Madeline Mercer from the Cobb Collaborative who brought this forward to us. And also, we are glad tonight to have Commissioner Judy Fitzgerald, Department of Behavioral Health and Developmental Disabilities, who happens to be Councilman Tim Gould's better half. So we're happy that she's with us. And this is, when this came across my desk, it kinda hit home for me. I had a friend who tragically took his own life last month, and I know that there's a lot of people going through a lot, especially in these COVID times. So I'm gonna turn it over to Councilman Gould to read the proclamation, and I'd invite Commissioner Fitzgerald and the Cobb Collaborative team to come on up, please. Mr. Gould.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a issue that's critically important for the state of Georgia and city of Smyrna, and really appreciate some really talented and dedicated folks to be here with us tonight. Irene Barton and Madeline Mercer, of course, from the Cobb Collaborative, and then, of course, my wife Judy Fitzgerald, who's the Commissioner of the Department, State Department of Developmental Disabilities and Behavioral Health. So thank you for being here. So I'll read the proclamation, and then you're welcome to say a few words after, okay? Proclamation by the mayor of the city of Smyrna, a recognition of National Suicide Prevention and Awareness Month. Whereas, September 10th is the World Suicide Prevention Day, and September 2020 is National Suicide Prevention and Awareness Month, where millions of people around the world join their voices to share a message of hope and healing. And whereas, in these challenging times, messages of hope and healing are needed more than ever. And whereas, each death by suicide directly impacts numerous family members, friends, loved ones, and by extension, the entire community. And whereas, city of Smyrna and Cobb County residents shall be able to access high-quality prevention, support, rehabilitation, and treatment services that lead to mental health, stability, recovery, and a healthy lifestyle. And whereas, every day in the city of Smyrna and Cobb County, people enter treatment into behavioral health services and community supports and begin the road to wellness and recovery. And whereas, resiliency begins early in life within families and communities and can be strengthened and reinforced throughout the lifespan. And whereas, it is essential that we educate residents about suicide, mental health, and substance abuse problems and the ways they affect all people in our community. And whereas, we encourage relatives, friends, coworkers, and providers to recognize the signs of mental health issues and guide those in need of appropriate services and support. Now, therefore, I, Derek Norton, Mayor of the city of Smyrna, Georgia, do hereby proclaim the month of September 2020 as National Suicide Prevention and Awareness Month, finding hope, building resiliency, supporting recovery. Witness hereof, I have undue set my hand and caused to seal the city of Smyrna to be affixed upon the eighth day of September in the year of our Lord 2020. Mayor Derek Norton.
Thank you very much, Councilman Gould, Mayor Norton, and members of the city council. I can't tell you how important it is that you just take a moment to recognize the month and the awareness day, and want you and the citizens of Smyrna to be aware of resources that are available in the state. I'm very proud to represent the Department of Behavioral Health and Developmental Disabilities. On our website and throughout the state, there are hundreds of providers that really want to be responsive to the call of people in need throughout the state. So we want you all to be aware, spread the word. But really, how this happens is locally, and I'm really honored to be here with members from Cobb County who are also leaving behind resources about how to access services and how to be a resource to those in need. But I really want to acknowledge you all have done the most important thing, which is not make talking about suicide a secret. It's important to ask out loud if someone needs help, to recognize when they do, to be a partner, to be not afraid of this subject. And you all are doing a great service to city of Smyrna and its residents just by saying this out loud and taking a moment to make this proclamation. I'm very grateful for your leadership on doing this, so thank you. Please.
Thank you so much. I also wanna echo Commissioner Fitzgerald's gratitude to all of you for addressing what can be an uncomfortable topic to discuss, which is suicide. But we thank you so much for this public demonstration of acknowledging its existence, but more importantly, acknowledging that there is hope. As the proclamation said, resiliency is built in us from a young age and that there are a lot of things that we can do. I've heard it described, that really, resiliency is like a muscle, and you need to use it in order to benefit from it. We're also pleased to be holding some suicide awareness trainings this month, QPR, which is a popular evidence-based training, question, persuade, refer, and we invite anyone here to join us for that virtual training opportunity. We have an additional one scheduled for September 24th at 2:00 PM. So we indeed welcome any stakeholders. And again, just wanna say thank you during these very challenging times. We are sadly anticipating an increase in mental health issues, and unfortunately, some people will see or feel that there is no alternative, and we want to be able to provide alternatives to them. And just simple things that each of us can do to let people know that they are valued, that we're looking forward to seeing them tomorrow can do so much. So thank you again.
Really appreciate y'all being here. Thank you very much. Item four is land issue zonings and annexations. 4A is gonna be tabled. It's 2020-233, Public Hearing Zoning Request, Z20-006, rezoning from NS and RM 10, conditional for the development of 10 single-family attached homes at a density of 9.3 units per acre, 1.08 acres, Land Lot 669, 3302, Atlanta Road Edgeline LLC. And this is in, I believe it's in Mr. Gould's district. Mr. Gould, you make a motion to table?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, make a motion to table.
Have a second by Mr. Wheaton. All those in favor, please vote. Approved seven-zero, thank you. Heather, that's, that's tabled until September 21st, correct? Yes, that's right, okay. Item five is privileged licenses. We have one, 5A, license 2020-07, Public Hearing, privileged license request, license 2020-07, beer, wine, and liquor pouring, 2590 Spring Road Southeast, B&amp;G Trade LLC, doing business as Biryani and Grill with Marie Golden as agent. It's the applicant here. I'll bite you up. And this is in Mr. Glenn Pickens. Ward, Mr. Pickens.
Hello.
Hey, Marie. Thanks for being here tonight. And I just wanted to confirm that you've taken all the necessary classes and everything for liquor, beer, and wine pouring?
Yes, I took them actually in June.
Okay.
So I re-studied and made sure I memorized all the information.
Okay, cool. With that, I just wanna make a motion to approve...
Well, this is, this is a public hearing. Before we, before we take a motion, is there anybody in the audience who wishes to speak for or against this liquor pouring, beer, wine, and liquor pouring license? All right, we'll close the public hearing. Ms. Pickens.
Okay. With that, I'd like to make a motion to approve license number 2020-07.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? Second by Mr. Wagner. All those in favor, please vote. All right, it's approved seven-zero. Thanks for doing business in Smyrna.
Thank you.
Item six is formal business, 6A, 2020-319, approval of the reappointment of Ward 1 resident Latasha Trailer Pearson to the Smyrna Housing Authority. This is a five-year term that expires 5/31/2025. Any background, Mr. Bennett? I can tell you, she's a former neighbor of mine and is a great lady, and will do a great job on the Smyrna Housing Authority. I'll turn it over to Ward 1 Representative Glenn Pickens.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to make a motion to approve the reappointment for Latasha Trailer Pearson for the Smyrna Housing Authority.
Motion. Do we have a second? Second by Mr. Lindley. All those in favor, please vote. Approved seven-zero. 6B, 2020-342, approval of the appointment of Ward 5 resident JD Smith to the Planning and Zoning Board to fulfill current term that expires December 31st, 2021. Ms. Wilkinson.
Thank you. So at this time, I'd like to move to approve item 6B, 2020-342, approval of the appointment of Ward 5 resident JD Smith to the Planning and Zoning Board to fulfill current term that expires December 31st, 2021.
Have a motion. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Welsh. All those in favor, please vote. Approved seven-zero. Thank you. Item 6C, 2020-345, approval to clarify and title the Committee on Appeals to be the Committee on Appeals slash Public Safety Committee. The background, please, Mr. Bennett.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Committee on Appeals established by Mayor Derek Norton on January 21st, 2020 was enacted to hear all disciplinary action appeals, including, but not limited to, appeals for police and fire employees. For clarification, the committee will be titled as the Committee on Appeals slash Public Safety Committee. The current members of the Committee on Appeals are Chair, Councilmember Austin Wagner, Councilmember Travis Lindley, and Councilmember Glenn Pickens. Approval to clarify and title the Committee on Appeals to the Committee on Appeals slash Public Safety Committee.
Thank you. This is, as he mentioned, Austin Wagner chairs this committee. Mr. Wagner.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to move to approve item 6C, as previously read.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Lindley. All those in favor, please vote. Approved seven-zero. Thank you. Item 6D, 2020-346, approval of Mr. Luke Lanta to serve as the initial conciliator for complaints filed with the Court Administrator's Office as it relates to ordinance 2020-06, unlawful discrimination, and for the mayor to sign and execute all related documents. The background, please, Mr. Bennett.
On August 3rd, 2020, the city of Smyrna's mayor and council enacted ordinance 2020-06, unlawful discrimination, to be effective September 15th, 2020. The ordinance states that a conciliator would be approved to serve, and this person would be a competent attorney of law, of good standing in his or her profession, and have experience in the area of constitutional law and employment discrimination. With recommendation from Smyrna Municipal Judge Phyllis Gingrich Collins, Mr. Luke Lanta was asked to provide conciliator services as needed to the city of Smyrna, as described in the ordinance. Staff recommends the approval of Mr. Luke Lanta to serve as the initial conciliator for complaints filed with the Court Administrator's Office as it relates to ordinance 2020-06, unlawful discrimination, and for the mayor to sign and execute all related documents.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Mr. Pro Tem, would you like to handle this item, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
And Luke, Luke is here, I believe. If, just thank you for being here tonight.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's, yeah, a pleasure to, to work on this part of the nondiscrimination ordinance. It's, it's been a major, major step forward for the city of Smyrna, and Luke will be part of that. He's a, he and his wife Kristen are longtime Smyrna area residents, been involved with the city for quite some time in a number of different facets, and I'm sure Luke will fill this role very positively and professionally. So with that, Mr. Mayor, move to approve item 6D, 2020-33, excuse me, 346, as previously read.
Any discussion? Okay. Have a motion. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Welsh and, and Mr. Wheaton at the same time. All those in favor, please vote. It's approved seven-zero. Congratulations, Luke, and thank you for serving. Item 6E, 2020-333, approval to change the location of the polling place for Smyrna 2A from Fire Station Number 3 at 2825 Park Road, Smyrna, Georgia 30080, to First Baptist Church of Smyrna, 1275 Church Street, Smyrna, Georgia 30080, for the convenience of voters. Mr. Bennett, the background, please.
The Cobb County Board of Elections and Registration made the recommendation to change the location of the polling place for Smyrna 2A from Fire Station Number 3, 2825 Park Road, Smyrna, Georgia 30080, to the First Baptist Church of Smyrna, 1275 Church Street, Smyrna, Georgia 30080, for the convenience of the voters. It was noted by Cobb Elections Director Janine Everler, the city of Smyrna has been a valuable partner with Cobb Elections while providing the fire station as a polling location. However, the number of voters in this precinct has outgrown the community room and parking at this facility. First Baptist Church of Smyrna is 1.9 miles from the existing polling place and will adequately serve the 5,417 active registered voters. This request was approved by the Cobb County Board of Commissioners at the July 27th, 2020 Commission Meeting. The Board of Elections and Registration also held a special called public hearing on July 27th, 2020, at 4:00 PM via WebEx Virtual Conference Call to hear any objections to this change. This change was properly noticed once a week for two consecutive weeks in the legal organ prior to being adopted on July 27th, 2020. This change is to be effective for the November 3rd, 2020 General Election. Notification of this change will include sending new precinct cards at least 30 days prior to the election, posting signs at and near the old polling location, and providing information on the Cobb Elections website, the city of Smyrna website, among other notification techniques. The city clerk's office and administrative staff recommends approval to change the polling location for, from, for Smyrna 2A from Fire Station Number 3, 2825 Park Road, Smyrna, Georgia 30080, to First Baptist Church of Smyrna, 1275 Church Street, Smyrna, Georgia 30080, for the convenience of the voters.
So this is a move in the polling place for Ward 2 that was in Ward 1, over to Ward 3 for the convenience of voters. And I will turn that over to Austin Wagner to talk about that, and...
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I think the first thing to note, just gonna say a few words about this. The first thing to note, this vote is mostly formality for us up here. Cobb Elections and the elections board there makes the decisions on where these polling locations are. Smyrna hopes to be a partner in these decisions. As you know, that's not always the case. We don't get our first pick on where some of these locations are. While the fire station has become quite a bit packed on election days, there's obviously some concerns about putting another polling place right next to Community Center polling place for, for Ward 3. So with that in mind, we'll, we'll be approving this because, as I said, it's pretty much a formality. We always welcome the input of Cobb Elections and we hope we could be partners in the future on trying to determine what's best for the voters in Smyrna for voting locations as well as other means to vote. And with that, I'd also encourage everyone to take as many opportunities as you can to try to vote in a different method than packing into a polling place, especially given the current pandemic conditions. The Secretary of State's office does have online voter absentee ballot application at this point. It's pretty simple. My wife and I did them within just a couple minutes and got the confirmation that we'd be receiving our ballots in the mail, excuse me, in the mail. I'd encourage everyone to do that if possible, and if not, go vote early as much as we can in the off-hours and try to avoid the polling places. But with that, Mr. Mayor, I'll leave it there without going too much further on my feelings here. Also, we have tried, for those who have asked, to try to get a ballot drop box in the city limits to try to make it more convenient for Smyrna voters. However, that has been met with some resistance from Cobb Elections. Unfortunately, it doesn't sound like we will have a ballot drop box in the city limits. So again, take advantage of the other opportunities, mail them back early. And I know I already said I'd leave it before, but I'll leave it there now, and move to approve this item as previously read.
Is everybody clear on where Austin stands?
[laughing]
All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second? Second by Mr. Lindley. All those in favor, please vote. All right, we have approved that formality. And I want to note that I made a mistake earlier telling Austin that he was chair of the Appeals Committee. It's actually Mr. Lindley, and Mr. Lindley has texted me and made me aware of that, so correction for the record. Let's see, we're on item 6F, Ordinance 2020-09, approval of ordinance 2020-09. This is an annexation request with 100% of the owners requesting annexation. All tracts of land lying and being in landlots 55 of the 18th District, 2nd Section, Cobb County, Georgia, total of 2.417 acres, being known as 5773 Oakdale Road, Mapleton, Georgia 30126, effective date October 1st, 2020, and part of Ward 7, and authorize the mayor to sign and execute all related documents. Mr. Bennett, any background, please?
Yes, sir. The applicant, Sean Tintle, is seeking approval for annexation of approximately 2.417 acres, parcel number 18005500070. All that tract or parcel of land lying and being in Land Lot 55, 18th District, 2nd Section, Cobb County, Georgia, located at 5773 Oakdale Road, Mapleton, Georgia 30126. The annexation will become effective October 1st, 2020, and be a part of Ward 7. Certified letters were sent to the Cobb County Clerk's Office and the Cobb County Community Development Planning Division. The letter of non-objection from Cobb County was received on August 14th, 2020 by the city clerk's office. Staff recommends approval of this annexation located at 5773 Oakdale Road, Mapleton, Georgia 30126, and authorizes the mayor to execute all related documents.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. This is in Mr. Wheaton's district. Mr. Wheaton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, certainly, this is a pretty straightforward request to annex in this particular lot of land. You know, just wanna certainly welcome this resident formally, I guess, into the city pending a vote of approval here. And so with that, I'd like to make a motion to approve ordinance 2020-09, the annexation request as read previously.
Have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Gould. All those in favor, please vote. All those in favor. It's approved seven-zero. Thank you. Before we go on to item G, I'm gonna take a point of personal privilege, and we've got a very special guest who's joined us tonight, my daughter Samantha Norton. And Sam, you wanna come on up here? Come on up these stairs So with the holiday, this council meeting ended up being on Tuesday, which happened to be on a very special day for my daughter Samantha. It's her birthday today. She's five. And since I didn't get to hang out with her this evening, I thought I'd bring her up here and tell you a little bit about. Five years ago, I was sitting in a council meeting, about ready to make an announcement that I was gonna run for council, and it was one of those really contentious zonings. And there was a ton of people there, and I got this text from my wife, who's also here, obviously, and said, hey, it's go time. So we, I didn't end up making the announcement that night. I ended up... I ended up zipping to pick her up and making land speed records over to Kinnostone. And we had Sam, had family, went into the recovery room and everything, and I'll tell you, the council was still meeting after we did all that. So I can promise you, we're not going to go that long tonight, but I wanted to bring Sam up here. And can I just get everybody on a one, two, three, just to say happy birthday, Sam? One, two, three. Happy birthday, Sam. And she's brought cookies for each of the council members. You want to pass them out, or you want me to pass them out after? Okay. All right, sweetie. Thanks, everybody.
We were all five once, too.
Thanks for helping make her birthday special, y'all. Appreciate it. And her brother Jack's with her, too, so. All right, we're going to move on now to item six G. Ordinance twenty twenty dash one three, approval of text amendment to section five of appendix D, design specifications for storm drainage, roads, construction, to allow for the master metering of water systems within private developments, and authorize the mayor to execute all related documents. Mr. Bennett, the background, please.
This is a request from Public Works to adopt and amend existing ordinances listed in this letter of intent. Currently, appendix D is reserved for new ordinances. Public Works would like to adopt new ordinance in appendix D, section five E three, to cover use of master meters for private systems that will be developed or redeveloped within the City of Smyrna. Any and all water, wastewater, and stormwater within the private system will be the responsibility of the Homeowners Association and/or Management Company. This will allow the development to make use of the property to better suit if they cannot comply with the current building code requirements, such as twenty-six feet from backs of curbs, et cetera. Under Safe Drinking Water Act, if master metered, the property development must sub-meter its water and comply with all requirements of water quality. All materials installed in private water systems must comply with current ordinance, Article five, chapter one oh two. With this ordinance, the city or development can deem any development private and/or public during the plan review process. It is recommended by the Director of Public Works for amendment to ordinances appendix D, design specifications for storm drainage, roads, construction, section five, water system design, maintenance, and hazard reduction procedures, E three, distribution system design, and authorize the mayor to sign and execute all related documents.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Turn this over to our Finance Chairman, Mr. Corky Welch.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd just like to make a motion to approve item G, ordinance two oh two oh dash one three, as previously read by the City Administrator.
Any discussion? Yeah, I need a second. Mr. Pickens, all those in favor, please vote. Approved seven zero. That's going to be nice when we're back in council chambers and it's up on the board and ready for normalcy again. Item six H twenty twenty dash three three four, approval of the third expenditure listing and amendment to the fiscal year twenty-one budget for CARES Act funding for an amount not to exceed eight hundred and eighty-one thousand eight hundred and sixty-six dollars for necessary expenditures incurred and/or planned due to the COVID-19 pandemic. Mr. Bennett, the background, please.
Yes, sir. Cobb County received funding from the Federal Coronavirus Relief Fund as an eligible unit of local government. Under U.S. Department of Treasury guidance, the county approved the transfer of funds to other local governments within Cobb County, provided that the transfer qualifies as a necessary expenditure incurred due to COVID-19 and meets the other criteria of section six oh one D of the Social Security Act. The total amount of funds allocated to Smyrna is two million nine hundred and sixty-eight thousand five hundred and fifty-nine dollars and ten cent. Half of this sum, one million four hundred and eighty-four thousand two hundred and seventy-nine dollars and fifty cent, will be paid as an advance, and the other half will be paid as a reimbursement for eligible expenses. The agreement provides that the funds may only be used to cover those costs that a, are necessary expenditures incurred due to COVID-19, b, were not accounted for in the budget most recently approved as of March twenty-seventh, twenty twenty, for the city, c, were incurred during the period that begins on March first, twenty twenty, and ends on December thirtieth, twenty twenty. City staff were asked by the City Administrator to prepare a listing of items that would meet the above specifications. Several staff members reviewed these requests. This item is the third of several expenditure requests. This request is for the purchase of additional technology and funding for a grant program for Smyrna small businesses. Approval of the second expenditure listing and amendment to the FY twenty-one budget for CARES Act funding for an amount not to exceed eight hundred and eighty-one thousand eight hundred and sixty-six dollars for necessary expenditures incurred and/or planned due to COVID-19 pandemic is recommended.
Excited about this draw that helps, a lot of it will help our businesses here in Smyrna who are really hurting. So I'm going to turn it over to our Finance Chair, Mr. Corky Welch.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to approve item H twenty twenty dash three three four for the approval of the third expenditure listed as previously read by the City Administrator.
Have a motion. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Lindley. All those in favor, please vote. Approved seven zero. Thank you. Item seven is commercial building permits. We have none. Item eight is the consent agenda. Mr. Bennett, Administrator Bennett, will you please read the consent agenda for council approval?
Approval to purchase five equipped Ford Explorers for the Police Department as part of the FY twenty-one Vehicle Replacement Fund at a total cost of two hundred and forty-six thousand two hundred and seventy-three dollars and five cent. This vehicle purchase will be through state contract and purchased from Wade Ford, thirty-eight sixty South Cobb Drive, Smyrna, Georgia, three zero zero eight zero. The five uniform patrol vehicles have been or will be taken out of service in FY twenty-one. The replacement vehicles were included in the FY twenty-one Vehicle Replacement Fund. The Police Department was authorized the two hundred and forty-six thousand two hundred and seventy-three dollars and five cents in the FY twenty Vehicle Replacement Fund for the replacement of five uniform patrol vehicles. The vehicles that will be taken out of service are a result of damage sustained in accidents or mileage or upon guidance from the fleet manager. The vehicles and equipment will be purchased using state-county contracts, and the graphics will be purchased as a single-source provider who solely owns the graphics artwork. All vehicles will be purchased from Wade Ford, thirty-eight sixty South Cobb Drive, Smyrna, and all necessary equipment from Insight Public Sector Graphics and Affersified Electronics.
So this is proof that he's been the police chief. He wanted to go into a deep dive into the background, and we do appreciate that. But all we really need is for you to read the consent agenda in its entirety for the council's approval.
Well, there you go. Lesson learned. Let me get back to...
We'll give you a break, so...
I can keep on. We can keep going. Let me get back to the consent agenda.
Item eight.
Item E is request authorization to use tips cooperative contract number one seven one one zero five zero one for CIPP, crewed-in place piping for thirty-three eighty Malkin Bird Lane Stormwater Project in the amount of one hundred and thirty-seven thousand eighty-two dollars funded through the Stormwater CIP, and authorize the mayor to sign and execute all related documents. Item F, award RFQ twenty-one dash zero zero two, City of Smyrna resurfacing project to the lowest and responsive bidder, Bartow Paving Company Incorporated, located at one zero five five Roland Springs Road, Cartersville, Georgia, three oh one two one, and funded by LMIG and Sblost in the amount of seven hundred and five thousand nineteen dollars and three cent, and authorize the mayor to execute all related documents. Item G, award RFQ twenty-one dash zero zero three, water line installation, state route two eighty to the lowest responsive bidder, KM Davis Contracting Company Incorporated, located at thirty-two fifty-nine Allstel Road, Marietta, Georgia, three zero 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 eight, in the amount of one million fifty-seven dollars, one million fifty-seven thousand seven dollars and fifty cent, funded from Water CIP, and authorize the mayor to sign and execute all related documents.
We also have items A, B, and C, which are approval of August thirteen, twenty twenty, committee of the home minutes, approval of the August seventeenth, twenty twenty, pre-council meeting minutes, and the approval of the August seventeenth, twenty twenty, mayor and council meeting minutes. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Austin?
Second.
And seconded by Mr. Gould. All those in favor, please vote. Seven zero. It's approved. Thank you. Item nine is ward or committee reports. We'll start tonight with Mr. Louis Wheaton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to say a word of thanks to the residents out in Vinings Estates and Joe Bennett as well for joining this weekend on our first Ward Seven walk and get to hang out with some residents down there in Vinings Estates and hear from some of their concerns and needs. Got a few good phone calls and text messages as well after the event with some thoughts as well from people that couldn't attend this weekend. Looking forward to being out at the enclave at Oakdale at one o'clock. We'll do it again. Hopefully, the weather will be nice and cool and dry for us then. So certainly, if you're in that neighborhood, feel free to come out and join us as we just walk through the neighborhood and hear from any of your concerns. And with that, I yield.
Mr. Tim Gould.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to extend a welcome to Joe Bennett as the temporary City Administrator. Appreciate everything you've done and will do for the city. And moving forward with some CARES funding, staff continues to work hard on the Wi-Fi hotspots and seeing what we can do to help out residents in our city during this tough time of remote learning, and appreciate their hard work and diligence in getting this done. With that, I yield, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Ms. Wilkinson.
I have nothing tonight. Thank you.
Mr. Welch.
No report this evening, Your Honor.
Mr. Lindley.
No report, sir. Thank you.
Mr. Wagner.
We're going to keep to a theme. I think I said enough about Cobb Elections earlier, so I'll leave it at that.
All right. Mr. Pickens, please keep it to just ten minutes or less.
I'll try. I just wanted to congratulate Joe on his new role and just think it's going to be great and look forward to see how you continue to lead the city, and also Chief Harvey as well on his new appointment, so...
Mr. Bennett?
I would just like to extend my appreciation to the mayor and council for having the, I guess, allowing me this position and having enough thoughts of me to consider me for this. I appreciate it.
Mr. Cochran. Ms. Heather. All right. Item ten is show cause hearings. We have none. Item eleven is citizen input. We have one person who signed up, Alex Bakri, thirty-four fifty-seven Shawnee Trail.
In my subdivision, we had a senior citizen walking his dog. It was attacked by two pit bulls. They were really torn up badly, and I commend the Police Department for excellent response. But it took Cobb County two hours to respond. Unacceptable. Secondly, I had a neighbor, seven in the morning, out with a small dog in her yard. Coyote by insideed her and grabbed her dog, killed it instantly. She chased it, dropped the dog, brought it in the house, and there's the coyote still looking for the dog. The coyote is one of three major nuisance animals in Georgia. The other two are the beaver and the wild hog. Pauling County has a bounty on him of twenty-five dollars. I see a lot of coyotes. The city needs to address this in the future. There's excellent trappers out there. When I was with Animal Control, I'd say at least thirty percent of my calls were wildlife calls, like a rat trapped in an empty in-ground trash can, or two labs taking on a copperhead. Both got bit. You have to go over and verify the snake, so you have to have knowledge of other animals. My background is fourteen years with the DNR. If any of your constituents ever have questions on wildlife, please let me know. The stadium devastated the wildlife that affects Smyrna. I've seen deer coming through my subdivision for the first time in thirty-five years. One got hit at four in the afternoon coming across from Ridgeview trying to cross South Cobb Drive at four in the afternoon, a deer. Never heard of that. You're going to see animals because of what happened with the stadium. And again, people have to know, the average person does not know much about wildlife. So when people that are ignorant in the city call Animal Control the dog catcher, that is so blatantly false. You have to know a lot of subjects, whether it's picking up animals killed by cars or what have you. My second one is the dog parks. We have serious problems now. Last week, I was walking out of Lake Park. It's twenty minutes, twenty yards to get out of the park. I got attacked by a dog. The person let the dog go in the parking lot, attacked me and my dog. Did nothing to try and get his dog. I had to kick it away after three or four times. My dog got bit. Finally, it left. What's he do? Sends a second dog out, running loose down to the dog park. There are a lot of people that are not having them on a leash going down to the dog park. I've been down there at four, five in the afternoon at Lake Park. Lot of fights. I'll yell at the people, get them out. You need an animal control officer to monitor this situation. The one thing I love with the city has a real clear sign, you must be twelve years old or better to be inside the park. When I ask people, that clearly the kid is six, seven, eight years old running around in there, he's got to be twelve, they say, don't worry about it, it's not enforced. They are correct. An animal control officer needs to be at there to find out who the troubled dogs are and ban them from the park.
Thank you, Mr. Bakri.
And I just want to let you know, if you look at the internet, look up Lake Park and Burger Park and see the comments, what the people are saying on the internet about the two parks, a lot of people now are being afraid to take the dogs down there because of the fights. There needs to be some control, and response time is very important.
Thank you, Mr. Bakri. You're mending over your time. Thank you so much.
Again, the city needs an animal control officer.
Thank you, Mr. Baker.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else in the audience who wishes to make public comment this evening? All right, seeing none, I'll declare this meeting adjourned at seven forty-six. Thank you, everybody.